Good evening. You're on to the planning board meeting of Tuesday, July 11, 2023. The meetings are televised. With that, I'll take a motion to accept the meeting minutes from our last meeting. Oh, by the way, Chris is not here tonight. He's on vacation, so there's only four of us.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Joe to accept the meeting minutes, seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing not. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four, Larry.
Yep.
I'll do the 81P, and then we'll do the public hearings, although the public hearings have asked for an extension until next meeting because Chris isn't here tonight, but we'll do them officially at 7:02. So with that, we have 181P.
Yeah, it's all I took. Do you want the full size one?
I, uh...
Well, there's a small.
There is, uh, in our package.
There's a reduced version in the packet.
Two lot, two lot split. Plan, it's a two-lot subdivision on Howard Street at the, uh, at the S-curve at the bottom of Howard Street. You're familiar with that area. So it's breaking it into two lots. The plan is indurable as submitted. The applicant will need to go to, to consider it to be a building lot, the applicant will need to go to the Conservation Commission. If you look at the, especially the second lot, there's no, there's no access that doesn't cross wetlands, so they'll be straightening that out with the Conservation Commission, but the lot as drawn is acceptable.
Yep.
Any questions from the board?
Make a motion that we sign the, have Larry sign the 81P.
Motion by Babe to have Larry sign the 81P. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ted. Any further discussion? Hearing not. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four. With that, it's past 7:02. We had two, um, two public hearings tonight, 7:02 and 7:03, which was the continued application of Old Cedar LLC, 80 Union Avenue Sudbury, to prove that definitive site subdivision entitled Old Cedar Court, three-lot subdivision. And then the second one at 7:03 was for special permit approval to construct a three-story self-storage facility and associated parking. The applicant has sent us a letter requesting that the meeting be continued to August. They did, there was a few things that we had, plus the fact that with Chris not being here and it being a special permit, they wanted all members to be present, especially with Joe not excusing himself from the, from the public hearings. So with that, I'll take a motion to accept till the next...
I make a motion. We continue the...
Motion by Ted to continue to the August meeting.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Babe. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous at three with one abstention. That was Joe with the abstention.
Right.
As I'm sure you know. With that, we have the continued amended site plan for 18 Colonial Road, Milford Groves Residential Holdings LLC.
We didn't have the sewer letter, as it turns out. They had sent it, but it didn't come through. So a copy of that is in the packet and Liz's memo. I, if you want to read that while she's trying to get the thing to work. Other than that, everything was pretty much ready to go, I think.
So we have one letter from the town engineer. This is a new letter from our last meeting. I'll read it into the minutes, or I'll at least paraphrase it into the minutes. I've reviewed the submittal for the proposed office building for the Groves at Milford, which included the office building and the zoning board of appeals decision, which was in November 2022. Stormwater comments. Primary proposal by the applicant is for the construction of an office building. The stormwater for the increased impervious area for the construction of the office building is in full compliance with the stormwater standards. The zoning board required the addition of 12 parking spaces. Due to the existing layout of the site, construction of additional parking spaces without increasing impervious area would be problematic. The applicant has relocated some existing pavement to minimize the amount of additional pavement required to provide the additional spaces. While the proposal doesn't meet the requirements of a redevelopment in the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook due to an increase in impervious area, the applicant has minimized the stormwater impact to the greatest extent practical for the portion of the project required by the zoning board decision. Therefore, Liz recommends approval of the amended site plan with the condition the applicant installs hoods in all catch basins within the subject property in such installation to be inspected by the town. I believe those were, if you remember, our two comments from our meeting that were open. So I think that answers most of that. I don't know if the applicant has any, anything further to add or not.
No, I think we had addressed the comments that were outstanding, and just the one condition of the hoods, I don't think, there's no issue with that. The one caveat that have some catch basins due to their original configuration, you can't fit hoods on, but I'm sure we can do whatever we can.
Yep. Any, Liz, did you have any other comments, or was everything in the letter?
That was it.
Any other comments from the board, or any questions from the board?
No, as long as they, they did what, what we asked, so I make a motion that we approve the amended site plan.
Motion by Babe to approve the amended site plan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous at four.
I'll read along.
Site plan review, 35 Grant Street, Milford Municipal Swimming Pool from Milford Park's Department.
I want to read through the stuff while we're trying to get the...
I don't know what I'm going to do, but I couldn't...
All right. Well, I'll give you a little more time. I'll read through the letters while we're doing that, and then you can bring up the presentation. The applicant requests site plan approval to construct a new municipal swimming pool at Fino Field Recreation Area. The new pool will replace the existing pool. Project will integrate the pool into the overall recreation area and provide a fully accessible complex. Specifically, the new pool will be constructed within the footprint of the existing pool. Majority of the pool will remain in place except for small changes for new drains and piping. Design provides a large area for recreational swimming, swim lessons and lap swimming, as well as full handicapped accessibility, a spray deck, and a bench-style entry, beach-style entry, I'm sorry. Walkways and fencing are being upgraded. Walkways and fencing are being upgraded. A playground is being developed at the west side of the pool enclosure that will allow access from the park and controlled access into the pool. Accessible parking drop-off areas proposed along the access road in front of the playground. Site is located in FEMA Flood Zone AE with a published 100-year flood elevation of 272 feet above sea level. The new entry building bathhouse is to be set on elevated walls and piers that will provide 12-inch minimum between existing grade and the underside of the structure to allow floodwater to flow beneath the structure. Flinched floor deck is at elevation 273.5, being 1 and 1/2 feet above the 100-year flood. I recommend the site plan is approval. That's from Town Plan and Larry. Letter from Liz. She's reviewed the plan, site plan comments. Proposed amendments to the site plan result in minimal changes to the use of the property. The most significant change is the addition of the bathhouse, access from the bike path. Three of the existing parking spaces adjacent to new entry building will be reallocated to accessible spaces with van-accessible parking sites. Expansion of the existing underground pump utility chamber to bring utilities above grade, and relocate the lifeguard station closer to the pool. Extended use of the existing bathrooms at the northeast end of the property to include access from Bottalato Field. Construction of the playground at the, at the west of the corner of the existing fence pool area. Stormwater comments. The project is considered a redevelopment project, which allows for some standards to be met to the maximum extent practical. Proposal results in an overall reduction of the impervious area and improved stormwater recharge where none currently exist. The project meets the requirements. Conservation, the Conservation Commission held a public hearing on the first and, of June and the sixth of July, resulting in the issue of an order of conditions, so they already have that done. Therefore, Liz is recommending approval of the site plan as submitted. Highway Department has one comment. There's no reference to the drain pipe that runs on the north side of the property under the proposed playground. The pipe is not in good condition. Sections of it have been replaced, but not the entire length. I am proposing the pipes get replaced and a stormwater BMP, such as a rain garden or smaller filtration system be installed. Most of the water flowing in the pipes is surface water from the neighboring parking lots. This will help in reduction, in reducing the town's TMDL, and I find it to be a great location for it. Water Department has no issues. Fire Department recommends one fire hydrant is feasible. Request is dependent upon the installation and location of an additional sized main. Water Department has no real comments, just their standard. You got to talk to them before you do anything. And then the letter from the applicant.
in front of them. So I don't know if you want to, if there's anything you could do verbally based on, here's what they've got, this is your plan set.
Well, as described in the letter. My name is Tom Scarlotta with BH+A. I'm the architect on the project. Jim Assam, who I've been working with on this job, is in, out west in his golf, Frisbee Golf Tournament for the week. My engineers' par could not make it, but I can convey any information relative to some of the issues that came up in the letters. In terms of the project itself, as you said, we are trying to improve the pool that you have now. We are building within the existing pool footprint. One of the questions that came up, the existing wall that separates the current pool to the pond remains in place. We're building up to it. We're taking just a small section out of the deepest part so we can trench a new line, trench a new main drain line up to the filter building. But other than that, that pool generally remains in place. Again, we are concerned with disturbance to the wetlands, the resourcing other side and the impact. The pool is smaller. It still accommodates over 260 people. In terms of size, right now, the pool is enormous, and there's a lot of unusable water space in it. I mean, it's very shallow water. But in terms of the size of 260 plus a spray deck, there's a lot of aquatic activity that can occur there. We're also creating more green space directly adjacent to, what was the wall, so that you actually can sit on a lawn area near the pool, closer to the, to the pond overlooking that. The existing filter structure, which is an underground chamber with a hatch, where the filter equipment is, is being basically abandoned. We're running all of our piping through it and up through the top. I am building on top of it a new filter enclosure, so there's a new building with a smary, small addition to house the filter equipment, electric service entrance to water, you know, and any other services, basically to get it out of that pit area, which is basically, it's a dangerous area right now, whether it's wet. Right now, you have, we're not doing any work to the existing bathhouse building other than modifying the concession stand window to make it handicap accessible. Right now, it's not, so we're just going to drop that and make that accessible. We're also, at that point, we are making, reconfiguring the fence to allow access to that bathhouse and the concession stand for use by the ball field when pool is closed, so we can, you know, open and close gates, get rid of the portage on that's sitting in the parking lot right now, and have access to the men's and women's room there, as well as a concession stand. Relative to the bathhouse or the entry building, again, it's an elevated structure to get it up out of the floodplain. We have steps and a ramp to get up. It's up a foot and a half above where our flood elevation is. So I'm maintaining 12 inches above the, basically the ground level, so any, in the event of, and we hit that high watermark, the water will flow underneath it. That building houses a, uh, a check-in area, so you have actually a control booth, as well as a true lifeguard room with a first aid station, and then men's and women's toilets. They are set up so that they are serving the pool when the pool is in operation, but they can be secured on the pool side, the entry closed, and then provide access to the rest of the park or to the field. So again, trying to extend this park and what we're doing to it to make it a bigger part of the park, not just focused on the pool itself. Sorry if I'm not kidding.
Yeah, I can't get it.
I don't see a sewer letter yet. Have you been to the sewer board?
Um...
Excuse me?
No. And there needs to be... No, I wouldn't, he...
I'm going to need to do that. I mean, just making sure that connection.
The new building is going to be connected, yeah.
Right. So you'll have to go, you'll have to go before them and get a letter.
Yeah, that's exceptionally shallow there, too, so.
Based on the grades we have, we're able to go out by gravity, because where we're putting the building, it hit the manhole that's basically at the end of the bike path. We originally thought we had to put up, we were going to put a lift station or a little small pump, but that's not needed.
So you just need to, you'll need to...
I think they're on next week.
They're on next week and, by Thursday, so give me a call tomorrow and...
I will.
Deadline at 10:00 AM on Thursday morning to get on the next week's agenda.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe on the 18th.
Okay.
Did you know about the, the pipe that Scott was referencing, Liz?
I did not.
I do.
Yeah, he was asking me about it today.
Yeah, it's there. It comes from the, facing the pool. It's on the right-hand side. It discharges, there's an outflow right at the right-hand side of the pool. It goes up and it, if I'm not mistaken, it shoots up by the existing, it's close to the existing pump chamber that way. So it's been repaired a number of times. It's something that should be found and repaired.
Okay.
And then Scott had said, instead of discharging everything in that outflow for a rain garden or something like that would be, that would be helpful for the town.
What we've done, basically, for our other discharge, we've been doing, we have surf, we have a cert, we have a underground infiltration system. We're just using dry wells to get all the water into the ground rather than, obviously, right now, dumping it in. We're also infiltrating the, the backwash from the pool. So when we backwash the filters, it's no longer discharging into the pond, so, yeah.
Also, there's a water line, the two-inch water line that runs along the front of the pump chamber from the, from Bottalato, from the, just to the left of the, the concession stand. It, there, and runs, and that runs all the way up to Fino Field, so it runs down there across, across the parking lot. So you're going to be, it's a two-inch plastic line.
Across the field or through the, we were aware of the line that came in, because there's a connection point that they fill the pool from.
Right.
Right.
That's, that is fed from, from a pit up right to Fino Field.
That's right at the entrance. I, yeah.
Yes. And that, as I say, that runs right across the front of the thing. I've done a lot of work there. I built Bottalato Field, so.
Okay.
Very familiar with the area.
That's the water, that's the water service for, that's the existing bathhouse.
Yes.
So.
And that's there. Also, on the, where the wings, where you're going to fill in, how are you going to fill those in?
Excuse me?
Where the, the area on the, the existing pool, on the, on the wing wall, the wing side.
How it has the wings that go on?
They just stay, oh, that it all stays. We're basically, we're not, I mean, we're not touching the wall itself.
No.
No, 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 not the wall.
But you're filling in, you're filling in from the wall.
Right.
The pool, the pool part.
What, how are you filling the wall in?
The pool part. How are you filling the pool part?
Right.
Crushed stone. Basically, we're putting a bit of crushed stone. Then we're not bringing, crushed stone, right below my decks, I'll have gravel for a better surface to compact, and then we'll have loam and seed on the other areas. But we're basically filling with crushed stone.
Crushed stone should go to the water level of the pond, and then you, I recommend you put a Marafi, some kind of a Marafi fabric there.
We do. It's, we have a non-woven fabric typically. That's typical what we do, and we also put in, I call them well points. Basically, I take an inverted pipe, put it in the ground vertically with a manhole, so that if anyone wants to drain the pool, if the water's really high and they want to drain the pool for maintenance, you can control, you can drop some of the groundwater using that device.
Also in there is a, the safety valves in the existing pool.
Right.
Are you going to bring pipe valves?
I would, the safety valves, which are the pressure relief valves, we would let that stay in place with the ground. I don't want to create a pressure. We're going to leave those in place, let them move. Then in my main drains that I'm putting in, the new filter will also have the safety valves.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, the ones that are existing, instead of letting them just stay in place, is just to pipe them up to the side or somewhere.
Out from away from, the idea is I want to keep that flow open from beneath to the top, right?
Again, I, I work on the pools, so.
I assume these are fairly large.
What we used to do when we're draining, not only that pool, but other pools, we used to always put a stand pipe up, so we wouldn't blow the bottom of the thing. So those are there. I would probably recommend that you pipe them up to some...
Up into the stone, just to get them out of the way.
Right. As far as the fire hydrant, I don't know.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's any water that's nice that would allow...
There's no water, there's no water anywhere near there. So I think the, yeah, the last one's up by Fino Field is the...
Corner of Sumner and Granite.
No, right, Granite. Right in Granite and the Fino Field is a water main there.
Yeah, but the hydrants, it's already in the street.
Yeah.
I mean, at the entrance, the Fino Field.
Yeah, but there's no way that, there's no way to feasibly put in water.
No.
The fire hydrant.
No, there's nothing running down this one.
The building doesn't, we don't, the building is small enough not required to have a sprinkler system, fire protection.
Yeah. Fire Department just likes a hydrant one.
Oh, I understand that, that's...
I don't blame you.
Any other questions?
That's all I, I can pick up right now.
I've had conversations with the water department about this, and we're working on it with my engineers, so.
Yeah, it's two-inch plastic.
So we're providing, we're going to pull, we have to obviously up the, bring in a new electric service from the far side, bringing it, the main panel will be in the filter building in a new, in a new dry area. Then we have a sub-panel we bring over to the, the new bathhouse building.
The idea of that two-inch line is good because eventually, if they, if they run the ball, there's a test, they have a test well by there that gives you, gives them like 68 gallons a minute.
It's actually, that's the little pipe that sticks up near the port, where the portage on is. You can see it there.
If they were, if they were to drill a gravel-packed wall, they could feed the irrigation systems, all three irrigation systems and the, fill the pool. So that's the thing of keeping that two-inch line.
Right. There's no, I mean, we're not, there's no irrigation with the area. Is the, oh, it's all field irrigated?
No, there's some irrigation down the front of the, the walkway.
Okay.
Once we put Bottalato in, and we had the water there and the time clock, so we ran, ran it down to keep the, you know, the walkway, Rick, down here.
Oh, in between the...
Between the, the pool and the...
Yeah, they're replacing that, so.
Right, more or less the same, making it accessible. Yep.
So you probably won't hit, you probably, you probably won't hit the irrigation then, right?
No.
It's only on the side of the, or does the irrigation go over to the east side?
Yeah, just, just one line that runs down the side, right?
West side?
Yeah.
So between the current walkway and the pool, or it's on the other side of the sidewalk?
On the other side.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, because we're actually build, we're extending the walkway towards the pool to give it five feet, so it's accessible.
Okay.
So we won't be into identifying that.
And the proposed building, is that constructive concrete?
Wood. So we're up on wood. Basically, we build it on wood, parallel wood piers, and then it's wood framing. And then we have a fiber cement siding. The inside is a kind of plywood with epoxy paint. In all other areas, we have, it's FRP panels. It's open, ventilated, so it's secure for privacy, but we have, we have to provide a fan by code, but we also rely a lot on fans and just natural ventilation inside of it. The two bathrooms, we're not providing heat, but they will be open. The idea there, they can be open in the shoulder seasons. Obviously, once it gets to a point where it's going to be freezing at night, they'd be shut down. But that way, they can open that up early spring and into the fall. Probably not until Thanksgiving, but, you know, probably right around Halloween and then shut down.
Yeah, pop on is usually done by Halloween. They use that the most in the fall.
You're going to tie off that two-inch line for the water, for the...
For the bath, though, yeah. Yep.
Continue to 15th?
How about the, the grass area? Does that stand the same?
Up behind the, everything on the, basically, everything on the, call it the west side of the walkway remains the same, other than, we have, we're not doing anything. We have, we are going to build, not as part of the current project, it'll be bid separately, but we're going to be putting in a playground up along the backside. And then on the side between the walkway and the pool, we're actually expanding the amount of grass that's there. You see on the plan, so, because the footprint, I think one of the drawings shows it, the size of the, the new pool versus the existing one.
And picnic tables, anything?
It's whatever there is. We're keeping the, we're maintaining the existing walkways or benches that have been there for a while. We're making accessible grade up to them. That's really more of a, an operational issue in terms of what they want to bring in for fixtures, furnishings, in terms of they want to bring in picnic tables or whatever else in their area. Particularly, they'll put them up in the back. They would put them up in the back in the trees where the shade is, but that's really something that the recreation people would do.
Has anybody looked at the lighting? Is there ample lighting?
Well, we're not, it's, basically, they close at dusk. We will have lighting on the building, so that for security purposes.
Right.
So that way from, you know, just for security, for visibility, if they're all night sky-approved. But in terms of the pool, there's no lighting at the pool. We're only putting lighting on the new filter building, so there'll be a little bit more light down there, but once dusk comes, they close the pool down. There's no, and there's no thought of really extending that.
The fence height stays the same?
No. The fence on, we're replacing the fence. The backside fence is six feet, but in very poor condition, so towards Bottalato Field. On the side closest to Fino Field, it's actually five feet, which is not compliant. We have to bring it up to five feet, to six feet, excuse me, as well as we have to close the gaps. There, can't have a gap greater than two inches in the fence. Right now, there's some good-sized gaps, particularly at the gates. We're also extending, it's basically, it's inboard of the wetland resource area. We're running a fence basically along sort of the wetland area, so when you walk in, right now, you could actually walk through the marsh down into the water, but from, I've been through this before with the state. They view that as still an accessible way into the pool. If you want to walk around, you could drop yourself down and get into the pool. So we do have, from a security standpoint, from a code standpoint, we need to enclose all that off.
So you're going to make it inaccessible from the water?
Yes.
The water won't be inaccessible from the, from the rest of the park outside?
Oh, no, right. It's just within the pool area.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then we cut it back to before the other building.
Yes.
Yeah. We just can't have, you know, people coming up. I don't know if you want to go sw, swim through the pond, go swimming and jump the fence.
I don't think that's good.
Well, next time...
Anything else?
Bring the full-size maps and keep...
I'm excited if this doesn't work again.
Entertaining motion to continue with to, to the August, yep, to our August meeting with, obviously, the sewer looking into the pipe that...
with, obviously, the sewer looking into the pipe that Scott talked about, see if we can get a solution to that.
The drain, drain area.
It depends on how, so, we can look into it, but I'm concerned about how much water goes through there because, as to what we can do. Because one of the constraints is that the floodplain out there, we can't.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying, yeah, I think, I think replacing the pipe, if it's, we definitely should do that while it's open. The rain garden is a situation that you need to make sure we're, I'm just saying it is not, doesn't make it so.
Absolutely.
So that, that's, that's part of going forward. And, you know, I don't think there's anybody here that's saying you have to do that. It's, if we can look at it, that's fine. If it says, if it doesn't seem reasonable, that's fine, too.
It's, in terms of a rain garden, right now, it's an outfall drag. It just sort of, it's a swell down. To put some plant, some rain, some planting in it for all to slow the water. And it's also, too, it'd be using natural, you know, native plants to do that. So that wouldn't be a big ask to put, you know, to improve that area where the outfall is. And it's also the fact that you're not gonna get pool backlash going through it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm.
You all say?
Anybody else?
No.
It's public here.
It's not a public here. You want to continue it?
Oh, it's a site plan.
It's a site plan review. So you need a motion to continue to next to, with Joe calling.
Make a motion to continue, motion with the sewer letter and more information about the drain pipe.
Sure.
Second to Joe.
Second.
I'll figure out.
Any other discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous opposed. So we'll see you back in August.
Try it again and see if this thing works.
Oh, okay.
That's what Larry suggested.
I'm gonna, yes, thanks.
Because I know they want to get, they want to get this going before fall.
Next one is ZBA special, special permit referral for 170 East Main Street, Destavio Acosta. The applicant, applicant requests special permits to allow for the establishment of a construction equipment, sales and rental business to replace the farmer auto repair garage on the subject property. Such uses are permitted in the CB Commercial District via ZBA special permit. This is the letter from Larry, by the way. It must be noted that the naudley 100 plus or minus feet of the property line lies within the Water Resource Protection District 1. That district is essentially the same as the 100-foot wetland buffer that is buffer that is included on the proposed concept plan. So if you look at your plan, that's where the WR1 boundary is. Therefore, only the southerly 200 feet of the property, which lies outside the WR1 district, may be used for the proposed use, provided a special permit is granted by the ZBA. The use and disposition of the naudley area of the property that is within the WR1 district will be determined by the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board during our respective reviews of the proposal. Applicant is proposing to close the two existing driveways, install one new driveway on the westerly side of the property along East Main Street. This will improve access and traffic flow both on and off-site. A traffic report will be required by the Planning Board during site plan review. New landscaping areas are also proposed along East Main Street frontage. Therefore, Larry recommends a favorable be forwarded to the zoning board of appeals subject to the following conditions. Equipment rental use, including parking and display areas, shall be limited to the southerly front 200 feet of the property outside the WR1 district. All off-street parking in areas of outside equipment display shall be paved and be located outside of the WR1 district. The proposed dumpster location shall be relocated to be outside the WR1 district. Site plan review is required by the Planning Board subsequent to any ZBA approvals. Any questions from anybody on the board that Larry or Liz may be able to assist us with?
Yeah, obviously, if they grant it, it'll be coming back for a site plan.
Right.
Yep.
More detailed, necessary.
Fairly, fairly hot, flat piece of property, too.
Yep. And they did, they did come in, talk about it first. I explained the concerns we would have with the current curb cut situation out there, and it didn't really favor their type of use of the property anyway. So what they're proposing now at least cleans that up a little bit. I think any use there that's auto-related or vehicle-related is gonna have trouble getting in and out of the site that close to the intersection. But that kind of comes with the territory. So not quite sure what else.
Is this the garage?
Yeah, it's roadies.
This garage, yeah.
Anything else from the board on a motion?
I agree with Larry. It's gonna be, come out of there with a low bed or something.
Yeah.
Well, at least it's not heavy equipment.
Yeah, it sounds like it's gonna be.
Oh, no, no. This is good-sized stuff.
Well, it's still, yeah, but.
They got, I took a ride by their present site. They got some good equipment.
Yeah.
And like Babe said, you bring a low boy out of there, you're taking, you're taking some curb, hot top, and maybe a cow or two.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna take the whole road to get out, that's all.
Oh, yeah. And that intersection's already.
And it's gonna be tight getting in, too.
Yeah. Certainly is.
Well, but they are, they are putting in a new curb cut, so.
Yeah.
So that.
Yeah, that curb cut's gonna have to be wide enough to.
And it's gonna be, it's gonna be situated better than what's out there now. So, yeah, it's all backwards now for what.
Well, at least it's not. I mean, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be something that they're in and out constantly with the equipment. I mean, it goes out, it's gonna be out for a while. It's not gonna be in and out.
Yeah.
Makes it a little bit better. I mean.
Yeah.
Make a motion to give a favorable recommendation.
Motion by Babe, send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA subject to Larry's comments. Now here a second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ted, you good?
No.
No? All those opposed? Three in favor, one opposed. Ted was opposed. ZBA variance referral, 19 Highland Street, Eman de Souza Silva. The applicant requests variance to divide the existing conforming single-family lot into two lots. The existing 26,586 square foot lot is proposed to be divided into one conforming 15,000 square foot lot and one substandard 11,513 square foot lot for development purposes. The proposed substandard lots will require variance for lot area, lot width, lot frontage. The existing house will remain on the proposed conforming lot. The property is substantially flat, regularly-shaped lot. There are no conditions on the property that constitute a hardship. Therefore, I recommend the board forward an unfavorable report to the zoning board of appeals. I don't know if you read this, if you read the creative writing section from his lawyer.
This is substantially the same recommendation I had made on the adjacent property, of course, as ZBA ignored it. But it's still, there's no hardship, so.
Yeah, there is no, there is no hardship. I mean, I look, I looked at the, I would buy it. I looked at it. I wanted to, I wanted to check to see, you know, I read the creative writing portion of the, of the article and, you know, he said that it's a hardship because we're not giving him two lots. And so I said, okay, well, when did he own this? And I went back and he bought it from the FDIC in bankruptcy in 2019.
Yep.
Didn't change the ownership name, but it was the same owner. So it was, so I said, well, did we change any, we haven't changed any zoning in there. So when he bought it in bankruptcy, it was one lot. I don't understand what the hardship can possibly be when he bought a single lot. It met all requirements. It didn't meet any other requirements. I don't know what the hardship is. I mean, you can go through the creative writing portion and see what the lawyer thinks the hardship is.
They already cleared the lot.
I noticed. Well, we won't, we won't get into that. That's, I mean, if you look at, if you look at the, how they do this, I mean, there is, you know, the lawyer goes into how, how this will now match the sizes. I didn't see any of them that had frontages of this. So he conveniently says, yes, this matches sizes of the others, but there is no frontage up there that's anywhere near what this frontage is. But we won't mention that. We'll, we'll just avoid that. We'll just, because all we look at is the lot. If I have enough area, I should be able to get as many lots as I want. So I guess you know where I stand on it, but I will entertain any questions from the board or a motion.
I make a motion to give a, send an unfavorable recommendation.
I second that motion. Motion by Babe, send an unfavorable to the ZBA, seconded by Ted. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor of sending an unfavorable to the ZBA will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at four, Larry. ZBA special permit referral, 60 Highland Street, Eno Foil. The applicant requests special permits to allow for the establishment of a supplemental suite within the existing single-family dwelling. Supplemental suites are provided for special permits under the standards of CBL Section 3.19. The addition of the supplemental suite will be accomplished with the 18 and a half by 19 addition and interior alterations to the existing house and will consist of one bedroom, a bathroom, and a combined kitchen, dining, living room as shown on the, on the plans that were revised through 6/21/2023. The floor area of the supplemental suite will be approximately 632 feet, while under the 720 square feet limit of the new provisions. The occupant will be the parents of the owner. Larry recommends a favorable be forwarded to the ZBA. Questions, comments from the board on this one? I mean, I think this is similar to ones that we've done.
Yep.
We've done in the past. I mean, the addition seems to fit within the, you know, makes sense within the existing dwelling. I mean, I would buy, it doesn't look like it would be ad hoc from what I saw from the street.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I, I mean, for the ones that we've done in the past, I mean, these are ones that I think we usually do send a favorable to the ZBA, but obviously, it's up to the, up to the board.
I sent, I recommend, I recommend we send a favorable recommendation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Babe, send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA, seconded by Ted. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at four, Larry.
I hope someday my kids do it for me.
I did it for me in my home.
I know.
Anybody have anything else?
Nope, that was it.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. To make a motion, we adjourn. Motion by Ted to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Joe. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at four. Thank you and good night.